Meeting of the Planning Board on Tuesday, May 6, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the Bucarel Elementary School. We are also offering the meeting electronically via Zoom. The meeting is being recorded and it also is being broadcast on HW Cam. Tonight, we are here to discuss the status of the MBTA 3A zoning amendment, including the recent, I think we should probably have a little conversation about the town's action taken recently, and then some discussion and a vote on recommending or not the MBTA 3A zoning amendment warrant article for June 9, 2025, special town meeting. We have already held the public hearing on the zoning amendment as proposed, so in the meeting, that hearing has been closed. At our last meeting, we deliberated for a moment or two and took, in fact, a straw poll, but did not take a formal vote on whether or not to recommend the zoning amendment forward to the Select Board for placement on the warrant. So with that, I think we can begin the conversation. Is there a report from staff? Or should I ask Mr. Pascarella to report on the litigation?
Sure, be happy to. I don't recall the precise date, but the Select Board authorized and the town has filed a civil action lawsuit which is consolidated in front of Judge Gildea challenging certain aspects of 3A under the unfunded mandate provision, certain classifications for the town of Wenham as with respect to the number of units we're required to have, and I believe one of the counts concerns the lack of fiscal impact study for the state. So a motion for preliminary injunction has been filed. The state has responded, opposed, and filed a cross motion to dismiss, as it did in the other cases. There were five towns who initially filed, there was previously a motion hearing held. I believe there are two other towns that also have filed in addition to Wenham, Duxbury and Weston, and we are waiting for a motion hearing date, which we thought might happen this week, but I don't think it's happening this week. So that is the status. There's a pending motion for a preliminary injunction that's been filed, and we expect there'll be an argument on that and a cross motion to dismiss.
If you had to guess, would you guess that there'll be a decision on the preliminary injunction before the special town meeting?
If I had to guess, I would guess that there will be a hearing this month. Judge Gildea has already taken under advisement substantially similar motions by other towns, which happened back at the beginning of April, so I think there's a good chance that there could be a decision before our special town meeting on the motions.
Thank you for that update. That's helpful. I know there's other claims in the lawsuit about the treatment of Wenham in the as-applied sense, that is, that the regulations as applied to Wenham are arbitrary and capricious and otherwise irregular. So I don't know whether the unfunded mandate claim or the arbitrary and capricious claim is more compelling, but I did, just so people know, those are the range of arguments out there.
And there's a request that, for mandamus, that EOHLC actually issue the fiscal impact statement. Their response has, we did issue one, we said there's no fiscal impact.
Right. Which, and it wasn't very compelling, I'll say, the fiscal impact statement that they did issue. So tonight, we have to decide what we are doing as far as voting on the amendment as we have constructed it, the bylaw as we've constructed it. We are led to understand that without a favorable vote forward, and whether that's tonight or at the town meeting itself, we need to have positively moved this forward, or something of the same character cannot come back before the town, if the town rejects it, for two years. So we would be out of compliance for two years. We'd need a favorable Planning Board vote in order for something similar to come back.
So we've received differing legal opinions on that issue. It's, I would say, Dave, feel free to weigh in on this, that it's, that question's unresolved, but it certainly presents an interesting development.
Could somebody explain to me the difference between, we referred this on to the Select Board for inclusion on a warrant versus a recommendation, right? So as I understand it, we've already moved this forward?
Yes.
Correct.
So now, the other vote is, what do we think about it, correct?
Do we vote in favor of it?
We, as the- Do we like it as written and report to the town that we think this is good for the town?
Well, I wouldn't say that quite in that way. I would say, we are voting to move this forward because it's the best we, I personally would say it's the best we can do-
But didn't we already do that?
Yes.
Technically, we did that.
We didn't give an approval or, we didn't say we approved this. We just simply recommended it forward.
Thank you.
And so the favorable, sorry, I just interrupted, but the language from the statute about a favorable vote from the Planning Board speaks to this question about what we need to do. You know how in the warrant, there's always a-
I get it, I get it, but I, that's why I'm talking to Dan's point, we've kind of already recommended to the town that it passes muster. If it didn't pass muster, we wouldn't have said to the Select Board, you can include on a warrant.
Yes. We've already sent it, we've done our work on the-
Done the process point.
We've sent it back to the Select Board to put on the warrant. There's a statutory requirement that a Planning Board make a recommendation to town meeting. That, we have not done that yet.
Correct.
And so that is just the terminology, the recommendation part is what we haven't done. We need to do that before town meeting.
Or at town meeting.
Or at, or at town meeting.
Before it's presented to town. The town needs to know what our recommendation is.
Which could be five minutes before the meeting starts.
Yeah, we'd have to have a public, we'd have to notice the-
Correct.
The hearing, but, so I think what you get-
Not a hearing, it's a meeting, correct?
The warrant, the warrant-
Sorry, I just wanted to be clear.
No, I was just gonna say, logistically, I think where you're going with this is, the timing is, it just has to be before town meeting, what our formal recommendation is.
And I don't think, I think it can be at town meeting.
Yeah, I think it can.
But the warrant will be published with a no recommendation from the Planning Board in it if we don't-
Do it tonight.
Do it tonight. That's correct, because we're running into the deadline for the warrant.
And I know somebody's online, ready to report that result if it does come to that, to the Select Board this evening.
Yeah, the Select Board is meeting right now also, but they're taking up the warrant discussion probably by 7, 7:30. So once you decide what you want to do, then I've, after we're here, I'm gonna run over to the Select Boards, and you're all invited to attend that afterwards, that warrant.
As long as you don't have to-
Will there be snacks?
Exactly.
Two people.
Sorry.
Yeah. So depending on what you do now, I will let the Select Board know, and then once they close the warrant tonight, your recommendation or lack thereof will be in the warrant.
Noted.
Yep.
Yep. So.
So further discussion, is that where we're going?
It's-
So we, we, okay, so we covered this ground, I think twice at our last meeting, about the timing for our formal recommendation, straw poll, whatever. Given the development with the town filing suit and then filing a motion for a preliminary injunction, the standard for a motion for preliminary injunction is, you have to have, the court has to find that you have a reasonable likelihood of success on the merits. That's one of the prongs for injunctive relief. You also have to show irreparable harm and that the balance of harms would be in your favor. But given that we've got an injunction motion that's pending and that it could be decided before town meeting, and it likely will have a pretty big impact on the remainder of the suit, so if we prevail on a motion for preliminary injunction, the court is effectively saying we have a likelihood of success on at least one of our claims. I think it would be premature for us to make a formal recommendation to town meeting tonight while that is out there. So I would recommend that we wait a bit longer before we make a recommendation to town meeting.
Any discussion?
I get, I get why you say that, Dan, and I, and I respect kind of the thought there. Here's my thinking, kind of from the scenarios. There's three options that happen, well, actually four. The first is after tonight, but before the town meeting, the court grants the motion to dismiss or denies the motion for preliminary injunction. I suppose in that same, so if that happens, then there's nothing on the warrant to guide the town at the time of town meeting. That doesn't stop Ann or someone else from standing up and saying, here's where we are given this development, but it doesn't give any indication in advance to folks who pick up the warrant booklet. The second scenario is that, but we would have a better, I think we'd have a better ability to vote in that circumstance. The second situation, in terms of whether or not we want to recommend, because the lawsuit would be over effectively. The second scenario is, we don't get a response until after town meeting, in which case, I think we kind of have to vote as a town, or at least as a board, with the expectation that it's gonna be denied, or that we're gonna lose the lawsuit. Because I don't, anyhow, and then there's the scenarios where it's granted, obviously, before town meeting. That would actually encourage the most are taking the vote tonight, in my opinion, because that's the easiest news to deliver. That might even cancel, well, I don't know if it would cancel the town meeting, but it'll obviate the whole thing and that'll be the end of it. And then the final scenario is that it's granted after town meeting. I think in all of those scenarios, I don't know how well I just presented that, I think we do the town the best service by voting tonight to give some indication in the warrant book. I really don't see the harm. It doesn't look like there's gonna be discovery. What's to discover? This board faced with a Hobbesian choice, what is it, a Sophie's, a bad choice, a choice with no good outcome?
Between silly and cryptic.
Made a recommendation on that basis, and-
Do you mean discovery in the litigation?
Yeah.
Oh, there'll be discovery in the litigation if, if it's not dismissed.
But there's nothing to discover.
But what's to discover?
There's plenty to discover. What, what did EOHLC do?
Okay, sorry, discovery of us relative to our recommendation.
Oh, I'm talking about us.
Yeah, I meant with us.
Done everything in public.
No, no, that's what I mean. It's like, what, what does it matter what we do today? How is that relevant?
To the town's position.
To the town's position in the litigation. I don't know that it is. I mean, they're gonna say, well, you're prosecuting this lawsuit, but your own Planning Board recommended in favor of it? I mean, sure, take my deposition, I'd love to talk, you know, like-
Right.
Yeah, I'd love to talk about the position that this board was in, you know? I don't know that, I don't know that it harms us. That's one person's thought.
I tend to agree with that. I'm also, this notion that you can't bring anything back within two years, suppose the town votes this down, which is a possibility, we could not bring anything substantially, it's not substantially similar, that's the wrong statute, of the same character back in two years, we'd be out of compliance for two years, and we would be losing a fair amount of state money during that period if we're not successful in the lawsuit. Unless, we could bring something back within that two-year period if the Planning Board gave a favorable vote to this, which doesn't necessarily mean a round, full-hearted endorsement of the this that we have to work with, because the this is what we can do with what we're working with, not maybe the best solution.
I think that's the vote we already took, right?
Well-
That's, to me, to me, that's the vote we already took, was, we did the best we could do.
It wasn't formal.
No, 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 no. The vote that we sent it off to the warrant, that was the vote that said, to me, that this may not be perfect, but yes, we did the best we could, we've given it to the Select Board, if you want to put it on the warrant, do it. So that, that to me, got their approval. Now we're just giving our opinion, and our opinion can wait till the very end, because who are we? I mean, we are the Planning Board, I get it, but with 400 people in that room saying whatever the result is of our opinion, I think that's valid time. I think to kind of parrot what Dan says, let's wait till we get more information, right? And we have almost 30 days between now and then to do, I mean, there's a holiday in there, so a little less, but I think we should be waiting.
I think the only thing that's different now than was the case before is that now there's a preliminary injunction pending, and there's no guarantee that that will be decided.
No, between last time we met and now-
Yes.
The town filed a complaint.
And there's a preliminary injunction.
And there's a preliminary, so that's two big things.
As you could have filed a lawsuit and not-
There's a motion, there's a motion pending.
A motion for preliminary injunction.
Yes.
You could, that's the only thing that's different.
That's a lot, though, right? I would think that's a lot for the town to be different.
There is no guarantee that the court will act before July.
I know, but we don't know the answer yet.
No, but the fundamental difference is, the Select Board decided to file a lawsuit under the, you know-
Yes.
One is, one of the claims is under the unfunded mandate. Why would we take a position that's fundamentally at odds with what the Select Board has done?
I don't think we are.
Well, but we would be, like, why would we?
I think, I think the arg-
I think we would be, I think we'd be putting the cart out in front of the horse here. There's no need for us to do this tonight. I think people are gonna be paying attention at town meeting-
I do, too.
-as to what the recommendation is. I think we're overvaluing the one line in the warrant that says, Planning Board, number, you know, whatever, three to two, four to one, one to four, whatever it is. If, if it says recommendation is pending, I mean, people are following this issue. So I do think that there's potential harm if we get out in front of this and take, and take a position that, where it could be at odds with what our litigating position is.
I don't see that it's at odds with the litigating position at all, because the litigating position has to do with whether or not the state properly applied the regulations. We're not, that's not this vote. This vote is, did we do the best we could with what we had, or did we follow the law? Can we recommend this forward because it satisfies to the best of our ability the regulations we're dealing with? That's all it says.
That's not what the recommendation to town meeting is.
Yeah, sure it is.
No, the recommendation to town meeting is, we think the town should adopt this, or we don't think the town should adopt this.
Well, if we, if we don't say we think the town should adopt this, and it fails at town meeting, then we're, and we don't win this lawsuit, then we've got two years where we're non-compliance.
For the two years, I know that Town Council said it's two years, what is the differing opinion we've received on that?
So-
Who's it from?
The statute says two years.
Well, the statutory, so the dispute is, when does the unless provision kick in in the statute? So to, I don't have it in front of me, but to paraphrase, it basically says, if you bring something, a zoning ordinance or amendment to either your city council or town meeting-
I can bring it up, Dan.
And it's, and it's, all right, let me just wrap this up now, and it's acted on unfavorably. You cannot bring a substantially similar proposition back within two years-
Of the same character.
Of the same character, within two years, unless the Planning Board has recommended its approval.
Right.
So the dispute is, when does the Planning Board have to give its approval? Is it the first go-around, or is it the second go-around? So I would argue, it makes more sense that it's the second go-around and not the first go-around. The opinions can differ on this. I say that because there's a similar exception provision in a different section of the statute. So if a developer comes before us and asks for zoning relief and they don't get it, they can't come back within two years. There's a two-year bar, but there's an exception provision unless such and such happens. So I would think that the exception provision should apply when you're considering the exception to the two-year ban.
Right.
Not that, not the first go-around. So that's, that's why I think it's an open question.
There's also a question about what of the same character means, because if you came back with a different bylaw that met a different set of rules, is that of the same character or not? We don't know, and I don't know the case law well enough to know.
Well, I would just say, let's say we bring the exact same proposal back, okay? I think practically speaking, I don't see a court saying, you can't do that within two years, when there's a state mandate. I also don't see a court telling the Attorney General, sorry Attorney General, you can't bring action to, to enforce the statute or bring, you know, somebody into compliance because there's this two-year bar. I mean, I think the Attorney General's gonna seek to enforce and a court's gonna say, yes, you can bring this up for-
So it'll be a different situation than was considered before when the court just called this provision a ban on reconsideration of defeated items that haven't received the Planning Board's blessing?
Who said that? Sorry?
Court in Penn versus Barnstable.
Yeah, so that's the issue. So the Penn versus Barnstable case, there is a decision by a trial court judge who said it was, he thought the unless provision was for the first go-around. The interesting thing about that case is that both of the parties on the appeal said, we think the court got it wrong and it's really the second go-around, but the appeals court didn't consider that issue.
The governor wants 370 of some, so units of housing in our town. I am sure that if we don't approve it and the governor wants those units, they're gonna reconsider it as soon as we have a policy that conforms to their thing, right? Because she's hell-bent on getting this. So I think politically, it's gonna overrule whatever case law we have, because they're gonna want to get it done. And the other question, the other thing I have is, it's not, our recommendation is, do we think in the future, for the future of Wenham, this is a good idea? Not, did we do the best we could do, given the constraints of the law, but as elected officials, we need to say, do we believe this is the best for Wenham? And that's where I think we differ in what that vote means. I look at it as, if this happens, we have the, potentially, potential, all potential, I'll start using lawyer terms, we potentially have the liability of roads, schools, maintenance, all that kind of stuff. We also have the potential of changing the character of the town, and once we open the door, you know what I mean, then the door's open. So I think we have to decide what we're voting on. Are we voting, we did it the best we could do, or we're voting, this is the future we see for Wenham?
Well, it's a state mandate, and the state mandate includes a suite, a suite of regulatory requirements, which we have done the best job we can do to comply with.
Yes, we have.
So that doesn't mean that any of us necessarily would write the statute the way it was written, or write the regulations the way they were written, or certainly, we wouldn't apply them the way they've been written, but it's not as though-
Getting dark in here.
Yeah.
Would you mind just getting up and walking around? There's motion signatures.
I think the lights go off.
The motion activated.
There you go. See, if we were having a public hearing, it would be easy.
Let there be light, right, Sal? Let there be light.
You are the man.
We need some more gesticulation.
Yeah, we need to be waving our arms up here.
There are few Italians up here, too. We should be able to do that.
I know.
I forget where I was, but you know what I, but you know what I mean.
I see the difference, though.
I don't, I don't think any of us would be, would be putting this forward in the, quote, "best interests of the town" on our own volition. I think it's a mandate, and if we don't comply with it, the town doesn't get a boat lot of money. So that's just-
So-
I know, we just disagree. It's okay, that's just two different-
Can I agree with a point that both of you made?
Please.
Which, yes, it's a mandate, and eventually, we're gonna have to adopt a three, I mean, I think eventually, we're gonna have to adopt a bylaw, but we did, and, and we did the best, I think we did the best that we could.
We did.
But we did the best that we could under the rules that were given to us. And the main reason why I think we ought to wait a little bit longer is because one of the goals of the lawsuit is challenging the rules as they're applied to our town.
Exactly.
And the key is, the key issue here in the litigation is, those metrics could change. So we've, we've done the best we could, but it's for 365 units and it's for so many here and so many over there. If a result of this lawsuit, you know, by disposition or settlement or otherwise, is, all right, Wenham, you don't have to do 365, we're gonna, we're gonna say it's 219, then we wouldn't have drafted this the same way.
Although we have a sunset provision, don't we? That we've agreed to?
We have a sunset provision, yes, but there's no guarantee that the Attorney General is going to look favorably upon our sunset provision.
And so only speaking personally-
When the lawsuit-
If the number of units were halved, right, or this unfunded mandate gets resolved to some way, my opinion change, might change, because I think we're being treated unfairly by the Commonwealth. So I think we need to give it more time before I can come up with, hmm, okay, so today, if nothing changes, then I'm probably still gonna think the same way I did, but if they're cutting the units by half and we can have it spread over a further area, or we're gonna get some reimbursement for, let's say, road infrastructure, then my opinions change. And that's why I don't think we're at a point where we can, I can honestly, I'd have to abstain tonight.
I think we, we also went on record two weeks ago, like, I know we're calling it a straw vote now, but it wasn't a straw vote until after we all said our piece. So I think that anybody who's been paying attention knows the opinion, the opinions of the board members.
If you're watching.
If, if, if you're watching, but, you know, the, the public hearing is available. We definitely have changed circumstances, but I think we all know how we feel about what we've put forward over the past two years, and I'm not gonna repeat everything I said two weeks ago, but we, we have provided our thoughts and feelings and opinions on, on this.
Does, Scott, do you have anything you want to say?
I mean, I would, the only thing I would add is that I do think the filing of the suit merits us waiting a little longer, and that would, I was in favor of taking the vote at the last meeting, so my opinion has changed on that. I do think that it's enough of a change that we can wait, and I also do think that the town, hearing our opinion from the floor at town meeting, will have equal power to reading it in the warrant book.
I guess all I would add is, nobody asked my opinion about filing the lawsuit, and I'm not upset about that. Nobody asked, I don't think anybody's opinion on this board, at least as I'm aware of, and I'm not saying anyone should have, but I don't think anybody's worked as hard on this as this board has, and we've worked too hard. The tragedy of 3A is that we have lost countless meetings and time from this board to chase an exercise that none of us feels so terrific about. And I guess it hit me last meeting, and then especially when I saw HW News and what Hamilton's now put forward. I mean, wow, Hamilton, you actually are doing something with 3A that looks like something you might benefit from. It just breaks my heart that this board is stuck, stuck in limbo, yet more time is being spent on something that is not frankly productive for this town. We have so much to do from the master plan, which, there's a lot of opportunity there. Part of me is like, you know what? Nobody gave me a call before the lawsuit. Nobody gave me a call before the lawsuit. I'm gonna make my vote on recommendation, one way or the other, and it's out of our hands. And let's spend the next month, thinking about what's really gonna make this town better, and move it forward, and what's in the master plan. Because to me, it's just a total waste of time. And it's been, once this moved, litigation is for the weak. Politics is for the power, powerful. As soon as it went into that posture, we were done. And it breaks my heart, because this board and many others have worked so hard, spent so much time, and here's where we are. And, the icing on the cake, again, was looking at Hamilton, and what they came up with. I'm just like, what happened here as a town? Why, I'm not saying we didn't do our best. It just breaks my heart that we're gonna spend more time and be stuck in further limbo, when we really need to be moving forward, this town, toward the vision, and the vision in the master plan, that we all worked so hard on. So that's my soapbox, and it's not directed at anybody on this board, or really anyone in this town, it's just more my gripe about where we are. And I'll do whatever you all want. For once in my life, on this board.
All right, so, I'm hearing a lot of people say we should not vote tonight.
I'm gonna make a motion that we defer our recommendation until before town meeting, or at town meeting.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion of that? No. Starting at this end, Mr. Anderson?
Anderson, no.
Weeks, aye.
Pascarello, aye.
Schumberger, aye.
Woodland, aye.
So I'm persuaded. We will stand up and do a soft shoe at the town meeting.
We can practice at my house if you want. I got some music.
Okay, next item of business.
Ian, I'm sorry, Ian. What was that vote? You had a...
It was 4-1, to defer.
Okay, so that was, Dave was no?
Dave was a no.
Thank you.
All right, so, I think we've hit those two bullets. The next thing on the agenda is an update on the project to update the subdivision rules and regulations.
Yeah, so we're, I did go back to the town administrator with your recommendation for Innis Associates, and, we are working on the contract with them. So we should have that ready next week to go, and we can start that project. Grant funding's in place, and we should be all set to go. So, Emily Innis is the owner of the firm. She'll set up a meeting with this board, as a kickoff meeting, and we'll go over scheduling and expectations at that time.
Will she want to do that, at one of our regularly scheduled meetings? Or will she want a special hour-long time with us, at a different time?
I think it can be up to you, to this board, what you'd like to do, if you wanna do it at your regular meeting. Or, set something up, or if you wanna appoint, you know, maybe one or two members of the board to work with her after that.
Well, I think it'd be nice to have the kickoff meeting with the whole board present, hear what she has to say, give her some thoughts about what's needed, because I think each one of us has some ideas about that.
Okay.
And then see where we are.
Yes, okay, fine. So, after we get the contract signed with Emily, I'll talk to her and see what, how much time she thinks she'll need to do the kickoff meeting. And then I'll discuss it with you, and you can decide if you wanna have a separate meeting, especially for that.
She's probably a professional meeting holder. It would be appreciative, I think, from my perspective, if she could just do some kinda session where we brainstorm, that we just like, talk about what our visions are.
Exactly.
Because I think, you brought it up, but, something formal, like a half hour, we could just, I don't know if they're still sticky still, you know, we could just do that. But, just to get out ideas quickly, so she knows what direction we're in.
Okay, terrific.
And to Mr. Anderson's point, we have a town plan now, that we wanna make sure that she's aware of, and that
Yes.
what she's doing reflects all the elements that we are trying to move forward.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Thank you, Margaret.
Yep, thanks. So we have to re-elect officers.
Yep.
That's our next item.
Because we had the election, and, you know, we have David's been voted in again. So now we have to have a new election of officers. The town's new regulation is that, you have to have a chair, a vice chair, a clerk, and if you have a board that manages funds, you have to have a financial officer. This board does not have your own funding source. So, it's like the Affordable Housing Trust would need one, Conservation needs one now, so... But you don't have a planning fund, so... So yeah, I'll let you discuss, and, you need a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk. The duties of the clerk are listed in the paper I gave you, and...
Undertake all of the clerical work of the board, including the correspondence, sending of notices. This, it seems to me, is that's like a staff?
That's what a staff person does. So, I don't know why, there are some boards that don't have staff, and so they do need these people. They would need a clerk from one of their members, but, I think what the clerk on your committee might do is, look at minutes, review minutes, or, just be called clerk. Because all of this stuff is what we do.
Can one person be the clerk and the vice chair? Because our vice chair now is an excellent minute reviewer.
Yeah, I would, I would, not really wanna take on clerk duties, if that's what the...
No, I know.
No.
Have to volunteer on minutes, but...
If Catherine and I decide to leave, then it's all on that clerk person.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, yeah, again, the clerk is just one of those, I think because if a board doesn't have staff people, they would have to do that, but that's definitely what we would do.
CPC has a clerk person, but, they really just make sure the minutes get on the agenda, and they're filed. But, the administrative person does all the lifting, yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Just a position and name for, you know...
Are these our rules and regulations?
These, yes, the Article 2 organization is in your rules and regulations?
Yep.
Your administrative rules and regulations. And then from the general bylaw, Article 5, that was what they voted in, I think, a year or two ago? Because there were some boards and committees that have finances, and they needed to have somebody appointed from their board, to oversee those finances.
I was just wondering if we could amend our rules and regulations, but I just saw the bylaw.
Yeah, the bylaws says we have to have a clerk.
So I guess what, you know, you have to discuss to somebody who wants to be the chairperson, who wants to be vice chair, and then you accept the nomination. Someone has to nominate somebody, and then that person would accept it, and then you would vote, vote them in.
Yes.
So, someone has to...
Do you guys wanna keep doing what you're doing? Do you wanna do it? Let's get this moving. It's like, it shouldn't be a big process, right?
We can leave if we...
Correct, that's what I'm looking, 7:30, I like to be out.
I will be clerk, as long as you don't leave.
And Catherine, don't forget Catherine.
And, I'm fine with the current situation. It's, it's, a question for, it's a lot of...
It's fine with me.
Okay.
I can, unless you want it.
I'd like to make a motion that we, don't you have to make a motion? Or just you accepted, you all accepted?
You have to nominate.
Nominate.
Okay, so I'd like to nominate, and...
A slate?
Yes, a slate. And Weeks as chair, Dan Pascarello as vice chair, and Scott Schumberg, Schumberger as clerk.
Second?
No, so now, you all three have to say, "We accept that nomination".
In unison.
If you do.
We need to say it in unison, because we're a slate.
Slightly different key.
We gotta lighten it up.
I accept the nomination.
I accept the nomination.
I accept the nomination.
And now, you can vote them all at once, if you want.
Anderson, aye.
Weeks, aye.
Pascarello, aye.
Schumberger, aye.
Woodland, aye.
Why is that vote the most complicated one that we have to take?
No, that was really good. We got it done.
I don't think it was the most complicated. It had three parts to it.
Let's be nice to Dan.
All right. Meeting minutes.
Oh.
You want me to bring them up?
Please, I don't have them.
There are only two...
There are three sets of them, so...
No, there's only two.
Only two.
The executive session...
Right, oh yes, the executive session, sorry.
Yeah, the executive session set is not ready.
So, Catherine noted, these were really complicated meetings. I redlined both the 16th and the 9th. The 16th was our meeting, when we all went on record, towards the end of the meeting, and then turned it back into a straw vote, at the public hearing.
Right.
So, I recommend that you look closely at how you were summarized at the end.
So perhaps, we're not ready to vote on that? Is that what you're saying?
No, if you can bring it up.
I have not looked at them, and I'm not gonna be able to see it this far away.
Yeah, we're not gonna be able to see it. So then, I move that we table the minutes from April 9th and April 16th, to our next meeting.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Anderson, aye.
Weeks, aye.
Pascarello, aye.
Schumberger, aye.
Woodland, aye.
Other matters? Margaret, do you have anything?
No, I don't think we have anything important.
I do.
Mr. Anderson does, and I have something, so...
Would you like to go first? Chair's prerogative.
If you don't mind, I was really taken by your point about Hamilton's multifaceted zoning proposal. I'd like to really look at that. I'd like to think about how Wenham can do something with what we have to offer?
You read my mind, Anne, because, what I want is the chair's blessing, for you to let me, and someone else, and maybe others, form a subcommittee, special committee, select committee, blue ribbon committee, whatever the committee's name is.
Blue ribbon, I like that.
How about peerless?
Peerless.
A peerless committee, to lead the charge on this, to get creative as opposed to defensive, and really take the bulls by the horn, and deliver...
Something interesting?
Wenham 2030. Just something interesting, something that can get people like, "This is actually interesting, this is thought-provoking for Wenham." It's sensible, it's enriching, it's something that actually makes sense from a livability, sustainability, community enrichment perspective. It's just wild thoughts.
Can I just ask what you're talking about? Like, what kind of subcommittee? Are you talking about outreach to Hamilton, or...
No, no, no.
Zoning bylaw?
Yeah, like a zoning bylaw study committee.
Yeah, which you can...
To implement some of the ideas...
Of the master plan of 3A, if it goes forward, of all this stuff.
You got the chair's blessing, I think it would be...
I would work on that.
I would much rather be working on that, defending stuff I don't...
Yeah, I had reached out to Dave about this, because when I actually saw what Hamilton had put out, and, my question was more wondering if, what the board's discretion is to be proactive in targeted zoning changes, or things that we thought would be more beneficial to the town, thinking on behalf of the town.
Well, if we're implementing a master plan, which we just completed, we do have that ability. I think spot zoning is not so great, but I think thoughtful, creative, what does Wenham want to look like in 2030, is certainly...
We did have a discussion about an implementation committee, and we didn't move that forward, so I think this might be a way to bridge to an implementation...
So, to go back in the Wayback Machine, pre-3A, and I guess for your benefit, because you weren't here. So, there was a time when we, as a board, were having conversations about, what are we going to do revising our zoning bylaw? And are we gonna, you know, where are we gonna put potential overlay districts that are gonna loosen the restriction on one-acre zoning, or whatever, something more creative?
Multi-use.
Cluster developments, or multi-use. And then the whole process kinda got hijacked by 3A.
I've not been on the planning board without 3A.
Okay, so...
So I've not seen that world.
Yeah, we were having conversations about this, about, you know, which...
However many years ago it was.
Yeah, because there are parts of town, that's sort of the older part, near here, right? That have smaller-than-one-acre lots, denser development. I mean, we heard plenty of concerns about people aging out of the community, because it's too expensive, kids can't, you know, come back, because it's too expensive. So, you know, what sort of options do we have? And then, everything just went 3A, and, to a lesser extent, master plan.
There was that intermediate step, where we said, "Gosh, let's look at the master plan for the town, and see what it says about how to get creative." And the master plan, then we discovered for the town, was dating from 1980. So then we thought, "Ah",
Sixty.
Step one, whatever it was, sixty. Feels like yesterday. But, step one was, okay, before we, five people sitting here, decide what's best for the town in 2030, we had better update the master plan, and it had better be an open and involved process, which I feel really good about, I feel it was. So now we've, okay, taken step one, now we can take step two. But then, the bombshell of 3A dropped
Right.
At that point, so...
And those things I was mentioning are part of the master plan. It's just, we haven't had time, really, or ability to discuss them in detail. So, yeah, I think that that's a good idea, Dave. If it's sort of a, like a idea incubator, that presented to the board. I have a question though, about Hamilton. I read the article in the HW News, and I saw the, you know, the multicolored...
Picture.
...graph. But, have they actually put a detailed plan for it? I thought that they hadn't done that yet, that they're waiting till their next meeting to...
I thought they were getting ready to vote on it in three weeks, at this special town meeting that they're doing with the school.
Because the public hearing is coming up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They haven't had that yet.
They haven't had a public hearing yet, okay.
Yeah, I mean, they must have something ginned up, if they're gonna go for it.
Well, they've also, they've done a ten-citizen petition as well, to ask for an exemption from 3A, so...
Right, but that's...
A different lawsuit from the one we're engaged in, but...
It's not their, that's gonna be interesting, on the standing issue, but, because it's not the town itself that filed the suit.
Right.
But remember, it's not just about the downtown and Boulder Lane parcels. I mean, that's where, that's the tragedy of 3A, Dan's point, and what I keep harping on, is we had that beautiful, two-page map, that identified target zones...
There's the iron rail, there's Gordon College, there's a lot coming up.
There's properties, there's large properties.
It's a 97 property.
Yep.
And for the large, for large part, we've lost a lot of sight of that.
And even things like food trucks. I mean, like down to the practical little things that make a town better. You know what I mean? We don't have rulings, laws around zoning on that.
Right, and commercial uses, particularly around the train station, around the village...
Mixed use.
Mixed use. Other types of opportunities. And what I think is too bad, is that there's people with stakeholders in this town, that we are assuming, that I would assume, are making decisions, or in the process of making decisions. I don't know if they've been waiting for this board, or for this town, but that was a year ago. It's like, it's time to start. It is gonna take a long time.
Yep.
Let's have some fun, let's make some maps, and see what we can come up with. So at least we don't have to feel like we're constantly on the defensive. I get 3A is the elephant in the room, or the...
Boogeyman.
Whatever, but, we don't have to, our board doesn't have to be paralyzed by that. Let's keep going.
And we have other, we, like the CPA is a great way to help bring those dreams up, right? It has the bonding ability, has the ability to disperse funds for projects. We need to tap in all those resources. State money, if we go to 3A. And, we don't do a great, we're a small town, we have very limited resources. I don't think we do the best job, because we're so tight on staff, on getting, thinking about all the ways we could engage the Commonwealth on cash, so... There's a lot we could be doing.
Ian, if I could, so, are you talking about, like, an implementation? Master plan implementation, kind of thing?
No.
No?
That, I know that's Kate, Kate is on, in top of that.
Yep, so the specific items in the master plan that we're saying we're doing-
She's approaching it from, I assume, kind of a checklist, prioritization.
Yep.
What we need is something at a higher level.
Okay.
People that are freed up from the checklist, that can actually look at the whole thing and say, let's think about the whole thing, the big picture, from the experiences that we've had with 3A, from the master plan, you know, what's going right in Wenham, what's not. We got the feedback in the master plan. How do we incorporate nudges, the first core theme, but all five of them, about preserving resources, intergenerational living, and interacting.
It's another opportunity for-
How to put all of it on a map.
Correct.
I, I, I think it would dovetail nicely to have, start having that conversation when the subdivision consultant is here, just so she can hear it. Because I think part of, I mean, subdivision rules, it kind of a yawn, it's all about streets, et cetera, et cetera, because it's a state law constrained thing, but it also, I think she needs the flavor. She needs to hear what the flavor is of where we would like this to go and what we want it to be like.
Okay.
It's a great opportunity for community.
By we, I mean the town, not just us five, but-
Or community engagement. One thing, I, I look back to 27 years ago when I moved here. One thing that was wildly successful are the side, the roadside path committees had had local neighborhood meetings when they were working on the sidewalk. In your town, if you weren't here at the time, these people raised $300,000 to build sidewalks because the town said they couldn't afford them. But they did that as a very grassroots effort. They had a lot of house meetings. So if you, if you're looking at, okay, what do you want to do in your neighborhood? House meeting, right, engagement, small, small conversations to get feedback.
Which we did with the master plan.
Absolutely. It worked again, yeah, and it worked great. It got people thinking about what it could be. And it, we need to keep the master plan alive. If not, my fear is in the next couple of years, it's going to fall off the table, which I think may have happened in the 1960s.
So I think it's a good idea. I have a recommendation structurally, so, because I think there's a lot of interest on the board to, yeah, we should do this, kick it off, get it going, but we don't want to silo two members of the board so that you're permanently, you know, separated from the rest of us.
Yeah.
I think we ought to rotate people through, and we can't go more than two, right? So maybe we say, you and Scott, kick it off for three months, or four months, or whatever, and then somebody else rotates in, and then somebody else, and, does that make sense?
We have to do everything in a public forum.
Yeah.
Well, so I-
And that's the question. Does everything need to be done in a public forum?
Well, so, having been on well-run but horrible committees with 11, 12 members, 13 members, God, those were rough, that met every week. Some of you were on those with me, I think. That's-
For a while.
That's tough. But at the same time, I do think that anything we do on this topic, I would welcome, we welcome community input, so I don't have, I think it's great that it's a publicly noticed meeting at regular intervals, in the evening, or at town hall, where we can lay out maps. I, I think, maybe we all five want to be on, and whoever shows up that night can show up, can show up. And we, and we, and we, we just, it's extra meetings, but there's, we're all there. And if you want to come and dream big, then you're there, you know? And we make it public.
We just have to notice it, right?
And we have to take minutes.
No, we can Otter it.
Otter it? That's allowed?
Right.
So- As long as somebody reviews it, right?
I didn't catch what you said.
Otter is an AI tool that does a voice to text, and it can, it can follow this conversation. It could do this, and it would keep everybody separate.
So Dave, this is kind of on your point. I wanted to share this, because I had a long conversation this week with a resident who is very pro 3A, which is a side of this that we don't, we haven't heard as much. And there are people out there on both sides of the issue. I mean, had a very long conversation, it was a really good conversation, and one of the things that came up was, you know, one of the unintended consequences, I think, of, of 3A that could happen in this town is, we, in order to do what you're talking about, right, for these new innovative proposals in line with our master plan, we're going to have to go back to town meeting for zoning amendments, and-
Yep.
What, what is the appetite going to be for that, if any, after we go through the 3A process, which is a, you know, it's-
I understand the pragmatism there, but I, I would say, let's, yes, I would say, let's not that be the driver at all.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. No, I, I just, I wanted to say that-
Reality check, I get it.
Yes, even, even, what I'm saying is, even on the pro 3A side of this, right, it, it may eat into other projects that, that we have, but, you know, it's good, it's good to know that there are, there are voices out there on both sides of this issue. We just haven't, we don't necessarily hear all of them.
I, I would just say, I'm not just talking about housing, and I'm not just talking about dense housing. The master plan in its wholeness created concepts like pocket parks. I mean, who's, who's going to stand up there and say, I'm anti-pocket parks?
Well, they'll say who's going to pay for them. That, that's what, that's Wenham.
That's fine. We can talk about who's going to pay for them. I don't even think they cost that much. They're just small spaces where people are intersecting and engaging. It's that level of thinking across all five themes, core, core themes, that I think we want to get back to. Because, you know, 3A's been so much about dense housing, at best, mixed-use dense housing. We've forgotten about commercial. Is there an appetite for that? We've forgotten about all types of things that were embedded in that master plan.
Things like recreational opportunities and making it a center for outdoor activities and attracting other people in. I know.
I'm going to put in a pitch for the park on 97, which is under construction right now.
Looking good.
Other committee I'm on.
Wes Wenham.
Yep.
Higginson Playground.
Higginson Playground.
We've got to get that name back. He was very nice to donate that land.
That's a big project.
It is a big project, and it's been a joy to see it.
And the trails being connected, which I think is great, but out of on trails.
We can do that.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Okay, so anyway, just an idea for the agenda for next time.
Okay, on the agenda for next time.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
No, I'm going to make a motion.
No, you can't. You can't make any motions.
Why?
Really?
Yeah, this is other matters, not reasonably anticipated. So you can't make any votes.
This is discussion only, darling.
All right, when we reconvene, what I want you to do, I want-
You can, you can-
This board to do is create a working committee.
You want to be the chair?
No, I want to be the chair of this. I want to be the working committee chair that we're all on, and we'll meet at two-week intervals opposite to the meeting. We'll notice the meeting.
For no more than an hour.
What happens if we don't have a quorum?
Then it can't meet.
You can't, but you can sit there. You just can't have a meeting and conduct business, but you can meet.
Right, correct.
Okay, so it doesn't matter, because we're not doing anything.
Although you might be, as long as it's been noticed.
Yeah, we'll notice it on regular two-week intervals.
No, you can have a meeting, you just can't take votes.
You just can't conduct any business, yeah.
You can, you can have a-
You can discuss.
You can discuss.
You can have a meeting and have an agenda and vote on anything you want, if you post it.
But if you don't have a quorum, you can't take a vote.
Not without a quorum, no.
All right.
That's the question, is if somebody can't come. Like, I have an alternating two-week thing on Thursday, nights, two weeks, so.
We're going to set it up, we're going to, we're going to do it, and we're going to dream big. And we, and if people want to come, they can come. If a select board wants to come, they can come, if-
We can, we can use the distribution tools they now have and the email system and the town to get out the word every week. This week's topic is, this week's topic is, and try to generate some interest for specific topics as we go through. We can plan out the agenda for two months at a time. This is the topic for the next week, and people can plan ahead.
I like the energy.
Say what?
I like the energy. It's good energy.
You should see me at CPA.
Do you anticipate staff support for that group?
Why don't, you, you can come and dream big, too.
I would love to.
I think, as, as far as that goes, I think, I don't know if we can compel you to come to all our extra meetings. I wonder, though, if we can ask you during the workday to prepare some stuff for us to work with.
No, of course, yeah, if it's for the plan vote, of course. Yeah, so why don't we do this over the next, until we meet again? Everyone get their ideas together for how that will work, and then we can put that together. Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, discussion only is, do it. Any more on that?
Now I can do my, I can do my-
Do, would you like to?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting of the planning board at 7:29 PM. Our next meeting will be?
So your regular next meeting date would have been this Thursday, but do you want to have another meeting in May before town meeting, or do you want to wait?
Do we want to maybe put a meeting, put a date for town meeting morning?
Well, that's it. You'll have to meet before town meeting. Is it-
Town meeting after an evening, evening.
Town meeting is in the evening on Monday.
It's a Monday.
On Monday evening.
It's on Monday, June 9th. Let me see if I have the correct time.
Is it 7:00?
So Thursday, June, whatever that is.
Do you want to meet at 6:00 PM here?
On Monday, June 9th?
Yep. To take your vote. You can meet, you can all meet at the town, where town meeting location is. We can post it for here. And then you can sit together in a room and meet and make your recommendation, and then announce it at town meeting.
What time is town meeting?
Town meeting starts at 6:30.
So 6 o'clock here.
That meeting's going to start at 6:30?
Yes, on Monday night.
It is not, that meeting is not going to end until 6:30 AM.
No, they'll, they'll, they'll post, they'll call it and schedule for another night. Believe me, I've been, they've done that before, yeah.
Wow.
So that's the end of my motion. So then our next meeting will be June 9th at 6:00 PM at the Bukeur Auditorium.
Well, wait, hold on. What about the, the lady? Is she, can she meet before then to get that going, or is she not going to be ready?
The lady.
What lady?
Subdivision rules, regs, in this.
Oh, I don't know.
Professional person that we hired.
That, that madam of-
Wow.
The lady, the lady.
I think if they're women, that's-
As soon as we get the contract signed, she should be ready to schedule something with us.
Not until June.
I would say by, by the end of the, you know, end of this month.
But not June 9th, that's too much for one.
No, no, I know. I'm wondering if you want to meet before then with her.
Yeah.
No? No?
Sorry.
No?
I, I think, let's, let's just let it ride, I think.
The, the select board is planning a meeting on June, actually, yeah, June 2nd, on Monday evening, June 2nd, to go over the warrant and have information. Do you want to attend that meeting with them? Do you want, do you want to make that a meeting for you?
In other words, to take our vote at that point? I don't think that was the spirit I heard tonight.
Well, I'm just wondering if you want to be at that meeting.
Yeah, I won't be there.
No, I think that-
Not in a formal capacity, okay.
If we're waiting for the court to do something, we're going to wait till the last.
I also think it makes sense to have it here, because if people, people can come.
Are going to be here.
Yeah, people are going to be here.
Right, they can attend our meeting.
And it'd be easy if they want to come to this meeting and then go right to town meeting.
I, I think if you're meeting just before town meeting, you, we won't have a lot of time to have public input or anything. It's mostly just going to be for you to make your recommendation.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
So then the consultant meeting would be either later in June or July? Is that the-
Well, your, your regularly scheduled meeting would be June 12th.
That's good.
For your June meeting, so June 12th.
Why don't we just do that?
That's not too far off, David, right?
Yeah.
No, that's, that's, that's great. We'll hopefully be-
By then, maybe Margaret could give them some background on us, and she'd be ready.
I would be completely fried, because it's two weeks before my daughter's wedding, but that's okay.
Where is this one going to be?